I call to order the regular meeting of the Mount Pleasant City Commission Monday, February 26, 2024 at 7:00 PM. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Mount Pleasant City Commission recognizes the Adneshanabe whose ancestral lands the city stands upon today. We acknowledge the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe and recognize that the three bands of A'Jibwe, Saginaw, Black River, and Swan Creek have resided on this land for over 200 years. Our acknowledgement of the full history of the tribe and our commitment to be good stewards of these ancestral lands are an expression of gratitude and appreciation to those ancestors who came before us. We give thanks to the generous care with which Adneshanabe and those members of the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe of Michigan have given and continue to give to this land and to our community. Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Bush?
Here.
Commissioner Chapman?
Here.
Commissioner Ake?
Here.
Commissioner Rollins?
Here.
Commissioner Wingard?
Here.
Vice Mayor Alsager?
Here.
Mayor Perschbacher?
All right, we have a quorum. Everyone's here, so we're going to move on. We do not have any proclamations or presentations, but I will ask the commission if there are any additions or deletions to the agenda. Is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
I move that we accept the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. We are going to move on to public input on agenda items. If you're here to speak on something that we will be discussing in the agenda, you may step to the podium. I will remind you that we do have a public hearing on the Special Assessment District, so if you wish to speak on that, it would be best to do it during that public hearing. If you wish to speak on something on the agenda, you may step to the podium. You will be asked to state your name and your address, and you'll be given five minutes. If you're joining us by Zoom, you can use the raised hand feature or star nine if you're joining Zoom by phone. You'll be let into the meeting and asked your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. Is there anyone that wishes to speak right now? Come on up.
Hello, everyone. I am Ryan Cook. I am a student here at Central Michigan University. I am here to speak on, at the end, where they will be discussing a possible ceasefire resolution for what is going on in the Middle East between Palestine and Israel. The following is an email that I wrote to the city commission that initially got this on the agenda in the first place. Special thank you to Elizabeth, who reached out to me, and we've had some great conversations. And so, yeah, so this is, this is what I wrote. Hello, city commission. I write this as a concerned citizen in Mount Pleasant, as well as a citizen of the world. As you may know, the conflict in Gaza and the West Bank has killed, injured, and/or displaced over 100,000 people, according to the United Nations. On top of that, Joe Biden has recently requested over $14 billion of taxpayer money to be sent to Israel for wartime efforts. At this moment in time, that has been passed. The amount of death and destruction that has been committed with our money is appalling, and the death toll will only continue to rise as time goes on. What I am requesting is that Mount Pleasant, Michigan passes a ceasefire resolution to show that we are against the indiscriminate killing that is going on in Gaza and the West Bank, and to show the federal government that our taxpayer money can be used in so many better ways. I understand that passing a ceasefire will not end the conflict. However, many cities have passed them to put pressure on our federal government to pull their aids from this war and to try to reach a ceasefire resolution with Benjamin Netanyahu. Cities like Dearborn, Detroit, San Francisco, Chicago have all done so already. It may be mostly symbolic, but it is our way of saying that as a city, we will not stand to give money to a war that has killed so many innocent people. I also understand that Mount Pleasant has many issues that could use the funding. Think about all of the homeless veterans that could use some sort of financial assistance, or the food bank programs, or the schools, or anything else that could be invested into the community instead of our hard-earned money going to war. This ceasefire resolution will also show our solidarity with our indigenous community, as it will show our obstruction to the murder of the indigenous people, as a majority of the deaths in Palestine have been people who were indigenous to the land. This ceasefire resolution shows that we do not stand for such disrespect to indigenous communities around the world. I also understand that many people have concerns over the hostages that have unfortunately been taken by Hamas. Hamas has stated in negotiations multiple times that if a ceasefire is reached, there will be an immediate release of all hostages. However, this has been rejected by Israel and the United States, and they have continued to wage a war that they do not have an exit plan in. A ceasefire would guarantee the release of these hostages, bringing families back together. I speak to you all as a community member, a Christian, and a friend of many, many people. I assure as all of you are as well against murder and slaughter in any form. No matter what, while we all have our differences, what we all have in common is that we are all human, and all of our lives matter just as the other. And so, what I say is that I demand that Mount Pleasant calls for a ceasefire. I urge you all to stand with me and the people of the region and call for a ceasefire. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Is there anyone on Zoom that wishes to speak? Are there any emails? Okay. Seeing no more, we're going to close the public comment and move into the receipt of petitions and communications. Manager Dissents?
Petitions and communications this evening includes the minutes of the Airport Joint Operations and Management Board from January, minutes of the Planning Commission from January, receipt of Town Center special events, resignation of Edward Clayton, neighborhood resident from the city CMU Student Liaison Committee, term to expire December 31, 2025, notice of temporary traffic control order number 1, 2024.
All right, we're going to move on to consent items. Are there any consent items that the commission would like removed from the consent calendar and placed in the regular agenda? Okay, seeing none. Manager Dissents?
Consent items this evening include the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held February 12, 2024, consider acceptance of $50,000 from the Michigan State Housing Development Authority for Neighborhood Enhancement Grant, authorize the mayor to execute the necessary documents, approve the program guidelines, and approve the allocation of additional city HO-DAG funds. Consider approval of a contract with Monchalav Sewer Services LLC for the 2024 sewer relining project for $140,800. Consider approval of a contract with MMM Pavement Marking for the 2024 pavement marking project for $33,694. Consider approval of a contract with Hutch Paving, Incorporated, for the 2024 milling and resurfacing project, and approve budget amendments for the same. Consider approval of a contract with Lake Shore Construction for the 2024 sidewalk replacement project, and approve a budget amendment of the same. Consider approval of a contract with Block Farm Operations LLC for the 2024 lime residual removal project for $280,000. Consider approval of a sole source purchase for water meters from Metron Fariner for $60,000. Consider approval of a contract with Meaden Hunt for the airport feasibility study and approve a budget amendment of the same for a cost not to exceed $50,000. Consider approval of payrolls and warrants. Consider approval of a contract with Lake Shore Construction for the Chippewa Waters Sidewalk Project for $28,244, and consider sending correspondence to the CMU Board of Trustees regarding the upcoming CMU president search.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to accept the consent calendar as presented?
I will move that we accept the consent calendar as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. All right, this is when we're going to move into our public hearing on the Special Assessment District 1-2024 roll and consider approval of the resolution. Mayor Dissents, would you like to set that up?
Absolutely. So, the city utilizes a special assessment levied on the principal shopping district for the purpose of funding maintenance activities which are managed by the city. These activities include the maintenance of grounds, hanging baskets, snow removal, and utilities for lighting. The city's PSD Board is recommending the special assessment provided for 2024 and 2025 to continue funding these activities. In order to move forward, the city commission will need to hold a public hearing on the proposed special assessment role and approve the attached resolution which sets the repayment terms and finalizes the special assessment.
All right, if you are here to speak in the public hearing, you may step to this podium, and you'll be asked to state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on this public hearing? Is there anyone on Zoom? Are there any emails? All right. All right, so we're going to close the public hearing as I see no one is requesting to speak, and we will turn to the commission. Is there anything that needs to be clarified for the commission at this time? Yes, Commissioner Ake?
I have a question. In looking at the properties or individuals identified, I noticed that there are some that are highlighted, and it's indicated that, you know, it seems to me that the levy is at 50%. Might somebody explain, please?
Okay.
We're looking at page 44.
Manager Dissents will explain.
Go onto that page now?
Yeah.
You said page 44?
Ah, yeah, start at page 44. There's one at page 44. It will be Molesworth, Zach, and it says 50%. Everybody else is 100, but then I see 50%. Highlighted name, 2117 South Main.
There's a couple of Pulvers, too.
Yeah, there are others. I'm just giving that as an example.
Okay, you're talking about the names that are bolded on the owner's name list?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
So, on the PDF, it would be, the one that I'm looking at is around 44, 45, actually.
Gotcha.
Yeah, it's 44 or 45. I don't know what your page is doing.
Yeah. I did not connect that with anything necessarily of significance. Downtown Development Director Sponseller, do you happen to know the answer to the question?
There's even one earlier, a Pulver.
I can answer that one. Took me a minute. I was like, why is it highlighted?
So, that is a percentage. So, in that situation, they live in portion of it?
Okay.
And so, that percentage is offset because that's their primary residence. So, the special assessment isn't on a primary residence. Does that clarify that?
Well, this document doesn't tell you. So, I'm looking at it, wondering, I don't know what's going on. Everybody else is 100%, and then there are these special, you know?
So, that would be the reason why?
Okay, makes sense then. Thank you.
Sure.
Is there any other, any other clarifications needed? All right.
Okay.
Entertain a motion?
I will move that we accept, do you want the language? I don't have the language. That we accept the proposed special assessment as recommended.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. I will open the floor for discussion. No discussion?
I'm just wondering, has there been many people that have come forward and contested this special assessment? I know there's, you know, it's been, how long has this special assessment been in effect?
Excellent question. That has, it predates me, so 2003. So, I would say I had questions. I've not had anyone come out and say, Michelle, I can't stand this. I hate this, whatever. I've had questions on, hey, why am I in the district? Help me understand what this is paid for. But no one has said, I would say this round, that they are wholly opposed to it. How about that?
Yeah, sure. You know, one of the things that was concerning to me was the idea that some of these people in this district that are paying for this don't get the same, like they can't, the one services, right? Two, a lot of them can't apply for grants because they're not technically in the downtown area, right?
Your timing, like, I, how did you know this was such a good timing this evening to bring both of those things up? So, let's walk through this real quick. So, as far as proximity to the amenities included into this, back in, gosh, I want to say it was 2010, one of the things that we looked at was the district itself, and the properties, even on the edges, were within one block of a municipal parking lot. So, that was one of the keys. In regards to, are they in the principal shopping district, and do they have access to the grants? Just this morning, like, hot off the press, I was impressed, like, how did you know this? Tifa this morning approved expanding the boundary for the facade improvement and the fire protection, all the grants, if you will, to cover not only the Tifa district, but the principal shopping district as well. So, here.
No more questions.
It was like teeing that up perfectly. I was pretty impressed.
Manifested that. Commissioner Ake?
Yeah, I, you know, initially, I wondered why, you know, these properties or businesses were being levied, but it seems to me, as you said, that there is a history, you know, to this. And it does provide us with an explanation if anyone is asking for why, you know, this amount of money is needed. I mean, if you think about it, how do you maintain, you know, what you're talking about, mowing and weeding and trash pickup in this particular area, especially if you want, you know, a very safe, healthy, clean business environment, you know, that's welcoming? So, who gets to, you know, who takes care of that? So, somehow, the money has to come from somewhere. So, you know, I realize that maybe some people would protest, but I'm glad that no one is protesting because it seems to me that they understand the value of what is happening.
And I believe that, and there has been, since I've been here a number of years and went through this, there are a handful of property owners who, on principle alone, they don't care for the special assessment. That's not a secret. I think the reason why they haven't come out and spoken is the fact that we have been able to be good stewards of that special assessment money and show them that we can live within our means, utilize that reserve account when necessary, and keep this at the same level as we have in the last two rounds.
Okay. Well, thank you. That's responsible fiscal management, and, you know, if we can continue to do that, and they're happy.
Are there any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Since there are no other questions, is there any further discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second on the table. We will take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Wingard?
Yes.
Commissioner Chapman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Commissioner Ake?
Yes. Don't make me choke.
Commissioner Rollins?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Alsager?
Yes.
Mayor Perschbacher?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, motion carries. We are going to move on to new business. Consider approval of the contract with Melly Construction. Manager Dissents?
I'm happy to turn this one over to Downtown Development Director, Michelle Sponseller. She's going to provide an overview of the project. She's done a really great job with this presentation as well. Overview of the project, bids that we received, and the recommendation that's before the city commission.
All right, I'm used to sort of facing you. This is a little different tonight now.
That's okay. So, I'll try and do both. All right, let's see if we can get the presentation up. All right, there we go. Well, good evening, commissioners. Tonight, we're bringing you an update on Town Center. This evening, you have before you the award of bids on the project. Staff thought it would be a good idea at this time to provide a little bit of an update. So, let's go through this a little bit. Some of this is going to look familiar, and then there's a little bit more information that you have not seen. We're going to reconstruct Parking Lot 3 and transform this space into a vibrant, multifunctional area with a goal to extend year-round activities and promote community engagement while retaining convenient parking. So, we know the purpose, we know the goal. How are we going to accomplish this? By taking the existing parking lot at Mosier, parking lot in Mosier Street bypass to, from this to this. Key elements include parking lot reconstruction, moving the parking lot westward over to Mosier Street to gain spaces, bringing back on-street parking on both the east and south side with an increase of 18 parking spaces overall, while also acting as a traffic calming measure. Create civic space for community gatherings by providing about five times the green space, providing a flexible area for events and gatherings of all sizes through an innovative design. Universal accessibility for all ages and abilities by removing the curbs, adding in wider sidewalks and seating areas. Addition of public restrooms that we haven't had in downtown in decades. Increase and improve the urban canopy with planting 57 trees. The addition of sustainability and safety features such as EV chargers, water filling station, LED lights, while increasing the emergency access to Riverview Apartments. So, let's go over the timeline. So let's go over the timeline. We've already completed the grand admin, or started the grand administration. I should be so lucky as to finish it, but we've started it. We sent the project out for bid in December. We've reviewed, and hopefully tonight we'll award that bid. Continuing on, we're going to be beginning construction in May, depending on the weather, and I have to say, Mother Nature is working in our favor at this point in time. And then complete by the end of September. I'd like to take a moment, however, to talk about this slide. Although it's simple, it's a short slide with estimated cost, what it doesn't show you is the hard work and long hours of the project team, especially the engineering staff. Surveying and civil site design by the engineering department, 3D renderings by the planning department, used a local design consultant for electrical and restroom building architecture. The electrical engineer, Clark Trombley-Randers here at Mount Pleasant. WSG Architects. Bid the construction project is two contracts to save costs on contractor markup, which is the reason why the restroom and the lot are in two pieces this evening. Construction, site, and building inspections will be completed by city staff. Grand administration and construction contract administration all to be completed by city staff. Let's talk about the confirmed funding we have secured at this time. ARPA funds committed by the city commission of 1.138 million. That's being used as the RAP grant. $1 million from MBDC for that RAP grant. $115,000 was offset by the city commission's decision to use EV holdings for EV chargers. $50,000 in grant funds from the Mount Pleasant Area Convention Visitors Bureau Destination Development Grant. Total secured funding, 2.3 million. Here's a snapshot of three grants, however, that we're going to still be applying for because the rest, you know, we're not going to rest on our laurels. So we're looking at tribal 2% grant, Mount Pleasant Area Community Foundation, and a DNR Urban and Community Forestry Grant we'll be applying for shortly. Some of those, however, won't be until the fall that we know the actual, will we get the money? So we'll be seeing that. Let's talk about bid results. But because of the hard work done by our engineering staff, and again, I really want to stress, we, Phil and I, really put them through the paces. We had a long wish list. The number of times we said, hey, could we do, and they were like, no. No, we cannot. Stop coming to us, Michelle, you're going to break the budget. By reviewing the cost estimates numerous times, so many times, in-house design work, commitment to bring our community the best possible project at the best possible cost. Combined projects are within budget when we open those bids. Total construction cost is 1.9430,000, 400, or excuse me, 1,940,583, with a construction budget of $2,024,060. Short version is, we're on target. I know, a lot of numbers. So what's going to happen from this point forward? Some of it, we've already completed, like the relocation of the Korean War Memorial, World War I and World War II memorials. We already made that decision on Broadway Central, and we've already started the very extreme communication on all of the project particulars. I've been talking about this in all of the meetings downtown. We have sent it out in our e-newsletter. It's been in our annual report. We talk about it in meetings, and from this point forward, it's going to be more feet on the street because I'm going to be going door-to-door and saying, knock, knock. This project is right across the street from me, for example. Because as, as much as we would like to think that everyone is paying attention to the city commission meetings or the newspaper or social media, sometimes somebody slips through the cracks. Going door-to-door is the best way to solve that issue. So we're also, and then going to be relocating the flagpole into the roundabout, but that's going to take place during the overall construction. Do you have any questions? Commissioner Ake?
I want to say, thank you for excellent work. I am really happy that we're making progress, that we're going to move forward on this, and that we have some money, and that you're looking at additional money. I'm thinking about the Michigan Municipality League. They talk about funding sometimes, and I'm hoping that maybe we could look at what types of funding they may have so that we can take our project as, you know, and present our project at one of the league conventions for a.
Next year for the Community Excellence Awards? Yeah, I see, I see, yes. Yep, that will, that will miss the deadline for this year. Our project won't be done, but yes, we would look forward to that next year. Yes, the MML has recently mentioned launching the Michigan Funding. I think it's a, it's a hub for a lot of just different grants. A number of our staff are signed up for the webinar, so we'll see what's out there. Even if you see something, you hear about something, send me an email. Worst case scenario, we look at it, we can apply, but I'm, I'm game to try it, so.
Vice Mayor?
I just have a question. Where will the Saturday Farmer's Market be held this summer?
Perfect question. Has that been finalized, Phil, before I, okay. Right here, in our City Hall Parking Lot.
Oh, good.
Yes. So we have here accessibility to bathrooms. It was the, was the main reason why we really wanted it here, so, yep.
I do recall that, I think, a couple of times, it's taking place there.
Yes.
Yeah.
Commissioner Wingard?
Yeah, like, could you remind me when this project really kind of started? Like, could you remind me what you?
You mean the, geez, we should do something with Town Center? It predates me, if that tells you anything. And I've been here almost 20 years now. About the year 2000, Vision 2020 was a community-wide, not quite master plan, but it was along those lines, for the whole county. And it really came, sort of, the idea bubbled up from that. There's been ebbs and flows. We've had the idea, but not the money. Not that we've been flush with the money, but sometimes we've gotten close, but yet the design wasn't quite there. This was just the perfect, stars had to align in order to bring not just the parking lot, but the civic space portion and the restrooms all at the same time.
Gotcha, and I just wanted to kind of go back to that and just say thank you again for overseeing this. Thank you to engineering after all this. Excited to see this project come to fruition, yeah.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Okay, I will entertain a motion.
That we accept the presentation?
Oh, no, did we already do a motion for the?
Yeah.
Okay. Behind. Okay, so.
Do we do another one?
We haven't done a motion for this.
I motion to approve the contract with Malle Construction, Inc. for the 2024 Parking Lot Number Three Town Center Reconstruction Project. And consider, do we, is it two separate motions? Or is it? And consider approval of a contract with Three Rivers Corporation with the Town Center Restroom Building Construction Project.
I second it.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Are there any, any further discussion?
I just, for the record, I'm, I'm adamantly opposed to a $569,300 restroom. I just want to make that very clear.
We appreciate your opinion.
Are you going to provide them with a restroom if you're opposed to a restroom?
I didn't say I was opposed to a restroom. I said I was opposed to a $569,300 restroom.
But it's not just a restroom, there's also storage.
I just want to make that clear.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. Okay, so we're going to move on to the Mission Street Corridor Plan. Manager DeSens?
So we've got another presentation that the city commission is in store for. I'm going to turn this one over to the city's Planning and Community Development Director, Manuela Povey-Dyko. She's going to provide an explanation of the project and the recommendation before the city commission this evening.
Thank you so much, and good evening, commissioners. I just wanted to give a step back and start with the master plan. So you may know that we have Mission Street in the master plan that was adopted in 2020, and it's obviously a priority in our community to redevelop it into a more vibrant business corridor as opposed to a throughfare. So the book number three in our master plan talks about the main goals for Mission Street in the future, which, you know, besides turning into a more business corridor, is to also make it safer to all users of the street. We unfortunately had several accidents on Mission along the years, including pedestrian fatalities. So that's something to highlight. The, it also called for the average speed and traffic to be reduced, as well as to add on bicycle and pedestrian safety, and then look at aesthetics to the corridor as well and help bring properties' value up while we have an enhanced streetscape and landscape. So book number two, that talks more about transportation in general, has more information about the future transportation plan and what that should look like and how Mission Street fits into all of that. And then we do have, very specifically, in goal, under goal number two, that the objective 2.3 calls for the Planning Commission and the DDA to come together and work with MDOT and CMU on the development of a plan for Mission Street. So basically, a Mission Street Corridor Plan to be developed throughout the years in making sure that we can proceed with that redevelopment. So, quick history recap. So some of you may recall pretty well the 2008 situation in which we had the Michigan Department of Transportation with funds to rebuild the south part of Mission Street into a boulevard corridor. This is a schematics that was shared back then. And back then, the Michigan Department of Transportation had very detailed rules about what a boulevard would look like. And they couldn't really design and approve a boulevard that would be narrow enough to accommodate our right-of-way on Mission Street. They also requested truck looms to be included every, a couple of feet. So you see here all this kind of bump outs going onto private property, and that would call for a lot of acquisition of property, making the project very expensive. And also, property owners weren't very happy at the time with that idea. The city also had hired consultants at the time to analyze MDOT's plan and provided a very detailed presentation to the city commission in October of 2009, basically saying that the city commission should consider not approving the project and leave all those dollars on the table because the summary of all of this is that there was not community buy-in. There would be a lot of maintenance on the city's end as well. And also that it, it wouldn't really add value to the corridor and add safety. And it would be, make it harder for business to be accessed. And there were sort of, basically, a huge list of issues that the community had identified. So, this is a schematic that one of the consultants put in a, basically, a summary poster that they issued at the time that talks about the current conditions of Mission. As we're all familiar, we have five or more lanes with the, the medium lane being the turning lane. And it's a very wide street. It's very hard to cross it, even signalize intersections. And then MDOT's proposal was even increasing that overall with, with their boulevard proposal in, in several instances. And, you know, it, it just didn't feel like a proposal that would get us to a more multimodal route, a more business-like route. And the community, what the community wanted, this is a drawing from back then, is what you see here on the corner left of the slide. So the community really wanted a narrow boulevard with more streetscape, space for bikes, more space for pedestrians, and just an enhanced public realm that would contribute to, to our city as, you know, Mission is basically one of our, our main gateway, if I may. So the city commission did say no to that proposal at the time. Since then, the city didn't stop there. The city hired other, another consultant, ACOM, to work on, okay, what should, should we do to make Mission safer and better? So there was a plan that the city put together with the DDA that created the idea of grid streets, which are the narrower streets that you see, especially on the west side of Mission, that kind of help cut the block in smaller pieces so it's more friendly for those walking, and especially those that are coming from CMU to Mission Street. And we were able to build those five grid streets throughout the years. And you see here on the top, the, the years that we built each one of them, as well as we were able to build what we call cross-axis connections, which are connections that are put in place in between private property. So you can go from one parking lot to the other without having to go to Mission and add on to that traffic craziness. So we did have three access, cross-axis connections on the east side of Mission and maybe one on the, the west side. And then the other thing that I wanted to mention is the zoning ordinance. In 2018, we also adopted a zoning ordinance that requires cross-axis connections. So any lot being redeveloped right now, we would be asking them to connect to other parking lots. And we do have a very different building form that we require on Mission Street. We're calling for buildings kind of like discount tire that you see being built there and getting completed, which is closer to the street, is a taller building, adds that massing onto Mission Street to kind of make it a more closed feeling and corridor to bring that sense of place and sense of safety. So all of that is ongoing, but those are smaller pieces. And we want to continue to try to develop a plan for Mission Street to be reconstructed in, in a better and safer way for all. So, I wanted to also show you the schematics that we have in the 2020 master plan. So this is a conceptual drawing that the consultants worked in 2020, and it had community buy-in. We had a charrette that was done to develop the master plan, and everyone was on board with key elements of this action, which I'm going to point to. So first of all, the idea here was to, would be to develop Mission as a boulevard with a narrow landscape medium, on-street parking, furniture zone, pedestrian and frontage zones to kind of add to the pedestrian environment to us as well. We did not have any dimensions published in the master plan. And one of the things that the city has been working with MDOT since 2020 is to further develop this plan. When we put all the numbers in, we, we get at least, we need at least 103 feet to fit it all. And the bad news is that we have a right-of-way that ranges from 70 to 150 feet in width, making this plan undevelopable in most of Mission Street. So we need to make this plan better, and we need to make it more targeted and specific to the different zones. And, and so, while we worked very closely with the engineering department and MDOT in the past several years to come up with an alternative that would be better and more easily implemented, which is what you're seeing on this slide. This is not final at all. We were just trying to put the same amount of spaces, the same ideas and goals, such as accommodating bike and pedestrians, as well as having the boulevard concept implemented. So in this case, we were testing out, okay, what if we allow Michigan Lefts to make the, that medium still useful to turn left, but make it safer? And then put the bikes together with pedestrians on a, a wider sidewalk on the sides to, you know, get bikes out of the street and, and make it more walkable and bikeable. And so we met with MDOT, and MDOT decided to collect new data last year. So they collected more traffic counts, traffic turning patterns and all of that. And they also implement, they, they inserted this concept onto their modeling system to see if that's going to be feasible or not. They're going to be presenting their findings in a joint meeting with the Planning Commission and the DDA on March 7 at 5:30 PM. We're going to be broadcasting that and recording as well in case anyone wants to listen and, and check it out later. So I just wanted to show some pictures of boulevards that have been implemented elsewhere. Obviously, I have to start with Mount Pleasant, with Brumfield. You're all familiar with Brumfield. Brumfield is, is wider than, than our boulevard concept that we're trying to implement. But one thing to note here is that why boulevards are helpful? When you're a pedestrian, you're crossing and you have a medium, you can basically watch traffic just from one side, and then you also have a place to rest until you proceed to the next crossing. So that's one, one of the main components of this. And, and then we also see narrow boulevards being implemented elsewhere in the state. So Grand River at East Lansing is a great, great example. You can see how streetscape is, is beautifully put, and it really adds to the place, and it makes it a more walkable and, and friendly environment. And then we also have Grandville Parkway in Traverse City that's in design phase, and they want to move forward quickly. And we, we have the same consultant that we'll be recommending tonight are working on that project with MDOT. And I, I've heard very good news from both sides on how they're doing in bridging that gap between the, the different jurisdictions. So, the, the, the steps that we are right now, we released what we call a request for qualifications for, for the development of a Mission Street Corridor Plan. The RFQ is not an RFP, so it's not as detailed. The RFQ is not an RFP, so it's not as detailed, what we're trying to do with an RFQ is to find a consulting firm that we. Basically can see being a good firm to work with to develop something together. And so with that, we received four bids and the prices, they varied greatly. And so we were lucky that Progressive AE was really within what we could have spent for this project. So I wanted to note that, you know, the main funding for this project will be coming from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, MEDC. Because we have our, we are RRC certified, we're certified with the Redevelopment Ready Communities. We have access to up to $50,000 that will be expiring March 11th of this year. And so we were trying to do this as fast as we could to be able to take advantage of that grant funding. And 25% of the expenses need to be matched by the local authority. And in that case, the DDA has approved that 25 match. So we were not going to be requesting anything from the general budget tonight. But the basically requested action for the City Commission at this time is to approve Progressive AE for the Mission Street Corridor Plan Development. And approve the proposed budget amendment at a cost not to exceed $55,350. Using 75% with RRC and 25% from the DDA funds. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? No?
I appreciate hearing the historical part of it because some of us have been around for quite a while and, you know, I've heard some of those things.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Right, I will entertain a motion at this time.
All right, so I believe that the City Commission approved the selection of Progressive AE for the Mission Street Corridor Plan. And approved the proposed budget amendment at a cost not to exceed 55,000, 55, yeah.
$55,350.
It's a lot of, you know, using $41,512, 50 cents from the MEDC, RRCTA grant. And oh my God, $13,837.50 from the Mission Picad DDA funds.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second that.
You won the language there.
Is there further discussion?
I just wanted to say, I think this is a really great direction to head in for the city. I drive, every time we drive down Mission, I just remark on just, it's a really terrible roadway, I really don't like it. And so I think it's kind of just a gash through our community of just cement where it's just hard to cross. I know as someone who's biked it before, I know as someone who's walked it and like have a lot of friends who rely upon like walking in that area for students. For the international community who don't bring cars over with them, it's a really terrible, uncomfortable place to be. And I think this, I think this is the right direction for us and I'm excited to see more of the work that comes from this, so, thank you.
Commissioner Eke?
Yeah, I do agree with what my colleague is saying. Yeah, as somebody who has actually walked, you know, who tends to walk across that street so many times, it is, it's very frightening. It is very, very frightening. And you are absolutely right, a lot of international students live on the, you know, across the street. You know, the traffic doesn't stop or slow down. And it's, you know, each time I walk across that street, I wonder if we should have, you know, what we have called a crossover, flyover somewhere. But if we do this, I think it will make it safer, it will make it cleaner, it will make it more appealing. And so this is, this is a right direction to go.
Okay, any further comments or questions? All right, then I will take it to a vote. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. All right, so now we're going to move on to consider a resolution in support of the ceasefire in Gaza and Israel. There was an email from Commissioner Eke this afternoon where she had some other thoughts on some of what we've had. If you look in your packet, you'll find the resolution that we had written. And I want everyone to read through that and see if there is any. Any changes, any comments? Yes, Commissioner Eke?
I think in my email, I, you know, there are a couple of places where I had questions and we need clarity. In the third paragraph, whereas, you know, since the October 7th attacks. Violence has continued to escalate throughout the region and the world. And, you know, I wanted to find out, you know, my question is whether this resolution should. If the focus is Gaza and Israel and then, you know, or are we including the rest of the world? Because that, the phrase then, you know, adds the rest of the world. And if that's the case. Are we also including Ukraine, South Sudan and Myanmar and, you know, so I want us to stay focused. If the focus is Gaza, then we should focus on Gaza. You know, if we're dealing with everywhere else, then we should maybe, you know, it might mean another resolution or working this differently.
Okay, so what you had written in. In your email was, whereas the recent and ongoing armed violence has resulted in the tragic loss of life of thousands of individuals around the world.
Or I believe that's what you were commenting on.
That's what I was coming to.
So, in the draft that was sent out as part of the packet, that whereas, I believe, had been edited, it looks like. So the edit to it, let's see, you can kind of, let me expand this out so you can read along with me, but it reads.
My edit, so I changed some, okay, I see what you're saying.
Whereas, the recent and ongoing armed violence in Gaza and Israel has resulted in tragic loss of nearly 30,000 men, women and children. A population greater than the entirety of the city of Mount Pleasant. So I think it does, so that whereas specifies it down to Gaza and Israel, I think, and that's portion there.
Okay.
But then in the next, whereas, maybe take out the phrase and the world.
So, yeah.
Throughout the region and the world, yeah.
Yeah, unless you want to, if you want to be expansive, then, you know, we, the title says it's Gaza and Israel and then we're adding, you know, that. I just want us to be a little bit more.
So do you want to just have it say, since the October 7th events attacks, violence has continued to escalate throughout the region?
Yes, because that's our focus, right?
What are, what's the thought of everyone else?
I'd be supportive of that. The only thought kind of, and I don't have specific examples, but we go into talking about acts of Islamophobia, antisemitism. And other acts of bigotry. So those do result, we know result in violence, however, I also don't have specific instances of those that I would want to, that I'm necessarily referring to. So bigotry results in violence, but there's no specific ones that I think that are acts that we're referring to in this ceasefire necessarily.
Okay, so we're on to whereas number four?
Oh, sorry, I was just calling that back, so on the third whereas, I'd be fine removing and the world.
Okay.
Yeah, that's my point there.
Okay, so we have, so whereas number one, two is good. Three, where may moving and the world? Yes. What about whereas number four?
I modified that, the language, it says that strives to always stand on the side of human rights. I, you know, I modified it to just simply, for me, it's sort of wording, you know. Why not, you know, diverse community that, you know, supports, you know, human rights, peace and justice or works towards human rights, peace and justice. Let's get to the, you know, point of what we're trying to say, that's.
Okay, yeah, you had.
I don't have my own text here, but I modified it and sent it.
Yeah, you modified the first, the first text we're looking at, the. On the packet is the one that was modified before we sent it out. So you modified the first one that went out. Whereas the city of Mount Pleasant, City Commission recognizes itself as a globally connected community enriched. Enriched by the racially, ethnically and culturally diverse community that, and you want supports. Human rights, peace and justice, okay. Is there any thoughts on that?
I would also modify globally connected, just simply say it's a global community enriched by, you know, then, yeah.
Are there any other thoughts on that? Just global community?
Community, yes.
Global, enriched by, ethnically and culturally diverse community that supports human rights, peace and justice. Yeah, okay, we'll move on to the whereas number five, any changes on that?
I had a question which I didn't articulate, you know, I paused and I'm assuming that there is. You know, that there is, you know, that this is deliberate because, you know, so anti Palestinian, you know, Islamophobia. Antisemitism, do you want, you know, do we need anti Palestinian and anti Israeli? I'm just simply asking, you know? Because if we're talking about antisemitism, well, for me, the implication also is anti, you know, Israel.
I think it bears importance to say both the culture and the religion because. I mean, it can mean different things in different contexts.
I'm okay with it, I just need clarity, I just want to make sure that we are, you know, clear about what we're saying.
There any other thoughts?
I agree with Commissioner Bush on that, just having the greater specificity in there.
And we're going to move on to number five, number six.
I added language. Including mosques, churches, hospitals, and I think I added historical sites. Because it's not just simply the hospitals, you know, historical sites have also been damaged or destroyed. In other words, the history of the places.
Yep. Okay, any other changes on that? And we're going to move to number seven. Any changes with that?
Number seven, it's not just simply masturbation, but you know, we're also earlier in paragraph two, we indicated death. I do think that that is also necessary there, including, you know, masturbation and death. You know, the absence, the basic life necessities and services not present, you know, those things. The absence of all of those necessities has led to all of these things.
Masturbation, death and ongoing crisis.
And, you know, so.
So masturbation, death and ongoing crisis.
I would say ongoing humanitarian crisis because I think that's what we're trying to address. I don't, I'm just simply reading.
Okay.
No, I think it is and then we haven't yet used that word, so I think that, yeah.
It's because it's not just simply, it's also the humanitarian, you know.
Any other thoughts on that? Okay, moving on to number eight. Any thoughts on that, where the US government holds a great diplomatic power that could resolve the conflict?
Okay, I'm going to say something here. And I'm going to preface it by saying something personal. So, I. My only worry about that, especially with the US piece, I think it is important. Has to do with it connecting, you know, connecting to policy decisions at that level. I am not saying that it's not, you know, the right thing to do. I want to say a personal thing, I want everybody to understand what I'm trying to say. I have experienced both ends of what, you know, those of you who know me well, know that I am a survivor of genocide. Okay, so I understand what is going, what's happening, I empathize. Which is why this is very, very painful for me to watch. But I'm also, I want to make sure that. Okay, this is becoming complicated, it's very complicated. Because the piece about the US government deals with policy and it's the extent to which we contend with that. That I'm not quite sure of, am I making any sense at all?
I, I mean, I, I think so, but I think, I think that's what we want or what I wanted to do. Is to say, hey, we are a body of elected officials representing a community that has this. And I think, I think, yeah, I think it's important to call out at a higher level. You know, listen, yeah, I mean, there's other ways to make our voices heard rather than, you know, just, you know, voting or whatever.
It also has to do with not only our diplomatic ties, but we're also funding.
Yes, yes.
The conflict too, and so when I was reading this, to me, the sentiment is up there, but it means nothing if we keep funding.
Yes.
The conflict, so how do we reconcile saying that we have great diplomatic power, but we also have the financial purse strings too? So, and every time I turn around, I see, well, we've given, you know, another 97 billion to Ukraine, you know, this much to. Israel, this much to, you know, the UN to, for the humanitarian crisis. So, you know, the call for, you know, a ceasefire, but we're still funneling money to keep the machine going. Where do we reconcile that?
But that particular, that piece doesn't say what you're just saying and that's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, exactly.
And that's what I heard from you, it's not so, you know, to, I mean, I don't know what language you want to put in there. Because this piece, as I'm reading it right now, didn't say what you're saying or what you're saying. Okay, so anyway, that's, that's my comment. I am support, I want to look at this, you know, it's a humanitarian problem, you know, the question then is to what extent. I think what we're trying to do is to hold our government accountable for what it's doing, whatever position it's doing. And at the same time, hold ourselves accountable for our roles or non-roles in this, so. I apologize for troubling you, but I'm just simply asking.
I think it's a, I think it's a good question to ask of like what policy are we advocating for? Because again, as has been stated, money going in only allows it to continue and that's the primary diplomatic way we can pressure is by withholding funds.
But our government's not doing that.
And that's, that's, that's the issue, so if we wanted to perhaps. Urge officials to prioritize the preservation of life and if we wanted to make a comment about. Restricting funding for further military action, if that's something the commission is comfortable with, like. Yes, that would be kind of the language we could add in there. It's difficult workshopping this, but it's important work.
I mean, diplomatic power is still a power. So do we want to split this up into like two statements instead of maybe trying to? Put it all together?
I think, I think we should split up into two.
Yeah, okay, because I think the diplomatic power still needs to carry some, I feel like that still carries some weight. I mean, because, I mean, if it's basically saying to the United States, whoever you're going to act like a big man, you know. to act like a big man, you know? You know, anyone, I guess. You know?
Maybe to add a a sentence right after that phrase to say, and we request the withholding of funds to, you know, in order to stop the war effort.
But then they run into issues.
You're going to run in, yes.
With AIPAC and, you know, it's kind of like we're.
I think for me, I think, I think to do something like this is is fine. I think it's great. I think when we start muddying the waters of getting above our pay grade, it starts causing problems. So I I think, I think to say we believe in the people, we we're we're standing beside them, fine, but we start getting to the nitty gritty of how we want to tell the government what to do in a local city level, I just think, I think that's beyond us. I think if we want to advocate at the state level to say, hey, state level, you tell the government what to do, have at it. I just don't think that's the place here, in my, in my opinion.
Advocate for the outcome we'd like to see, which we'd like to see a ceasefire, the means by which we go about doing it might be more than we could deliberate on at the moment.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Okay. In that case, let them decide how we get to a ceasefire and peace.
I mean, honestly, that's, I think that's why it's so important to say diplomatic power, you know, that.
Okay, so we going to leave it the way it is?
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to move on to number nine. Now be it therefore resolved. Maureen had added, had taken out this, um, Israel, so the ceasefire in Gaza and the safe return of all innocent, and she put Israeli and Palestinian hostages and detainees.
Those are good changes.
Well, thank you.
What do you guys feel about that?
I'm good with those changes.
Okay. Any other thoughts on number nine? And we're going to move on to number 10, be it further resolved. That we, the City Commission condemns all forms of discrimination, including Islamophobia, Islamophobia, and antisemitism and anti Palestinian and anti Israeli bigotry. Everyone okay with that?
Or we're going to take out the.
We're going to take out the extra and.
Yeah, take out the the first and.
Yep. Okay. Number 11 is be further resolved that the passage of a copy of this resolution will be sent to the Office of the United States President and the offices, Office of the United States Representatives and Senators.
Would it be worthwhile to include the Office of the Governor?
Yes.
Okay, we can conclude the, after the state senators or after the the.
That would work. It'd be federal and then the state, you know.
An Office of Governor. And then number 12, be it finally resolved that the City of Mount Pleasant City Commission expresses its immense sorrow over the loss of innocent lives. Looking down here to see if you'd done anything different.
I would say.
And the suffering, yeah, you would take in a couple of words.
I would take out and around the world also because again, the focus is, you know, Gaza and Israel, so.
Okay, so innocent lives and suffering endured by citizens of Gaza and Israel. And I always thought that that hand, that shorthand class would not come in handy. Okay, around the world, we'll take this out. And extends deepest sympathies to Mount Pleasant Central Michigan University students and faculty and Michigan residents who have been directly impacted by the ongoing violence in any way, including the loss of loved ones.
I, you know, I wondered about that, whether we should actually separate those two. One is, you know, instead of that being the final, make the the extension of deepest sympathies to Mount Pleasant Central Michigan University students and faculty the final resolution.
Okay, not include Michigan residents?
Well, no, 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 just that component, that piece. So, um, so be it, maybe have another, be it further resolved that the City of Mount Pleasant, you know, City Commission expresses its immense sorrow over the loss of innocent lives and the suffering endured by citizens, by civilians in Gaza and Israel. And then the the last one will be, be it finally resolved, because now you focus on the students and the faculty and, you know. Otherwise, that is buried in that first piece. It almost disappears for me, and that's important because they are immediate, you know?
Yeah.
Circle. Am I making any sense?
Yeah, so you want, um, so instead of finally, be finally resolved, we're going to do be it further resolved. On that the City of Mount Pleasant City Commission expresses its immense sorrow for the, over the loss of innocent lives and the suffering endured by citizens in Gaza and Israel, and be it finally resolved. Um, that the City of Mount Pleasant City Commission extends deepest sympathies to Mount Pleasant, Central Michigan University students, faculty.
Yes. Yes. I wasn't sure exactly where you're placing that separation, but yes, that makes sense.
More personal.
Yeah.
All right, how are we feeling about this? Do we feel good with the changes?
I feel good with the changes.
Is there a motion?
I move that we accept the resolution with the changes.
Okay.
A second. Oh, okay.
All right. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. The resolution will be rewritten and sent out.
Thank you. Thank you, Ryan, for bringing this forward. Really, thank you.
Thank you.
I can't thank you all enough. Thank you so much. I I'll keep it brief, but we all had the opportunity today to be on the right side of history, being on the side of human life, every single one of you, take that aside. So thank you all so, so much. You are all such a blessing.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Especially to those lot, every community here, but, um, thank you for all the changes that you've made. Thank you, Elizabeth, too, as well. I, what I got a sense of was dedication and involvement from people that genuinely cared to let the rest of the world know how we feel. So I put a lot on my heart, I'll say it a million times, thank you all so very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. You're welcome.
All right, so we're going to move on to announcements of city-related issues and business. This is when the City Commission can bring forward any, anything that they have going on out in the community that they know of, or have any directions for staff. Anything out there?
It is still Black History Month.
Yep.
Okay. And Women's History Month is coming up, just the one month they spend focusing on women. International Women's Day is coming up too. All right, don't mind me.
I should think Islander Day is coming up too.
I was just going to state the obvious to everybody here in the choir that Voting Day is tomorrow.
Yes. Voting Day, voting has been going on.
Well, yes.
For the last nine days, eight days. Clerk?
I just want to add that we all made history during the nine days of early voting that completed on Sunday. We had 353 voters visit our precinct on campus. And I'd like to extend my thanks to the community partners that helped make that happen, as well as staff here within the city.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I know it was a lot of work. Definitely.
Yeah, but it was convenient for students, for a lot of people, too.
It was.
Yeah.
It was. Any other comments? No? All right. We are going to move to the public comment on agenda and non-agenda items. If you wish to speak on something that we spoke on tonight, or you would like to bring something else to the podium, you'd be asked to step to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. If you're joining us by Zoom, you can use the raised hand feature or star nine if you're joining Zoom by phone. You'll be moved into the meeting, asked to state your name and address, and be given five minutes. Is there anyone on Zoom? Is there any emails? Okay. Come on forward.
So anytime I do a presentation, it seems like the. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tiny Homes. Yes. And other things.
Thank you.
This is kind of a tiny little mini presentation that is totally unconventional, and if you've met me before, you know I'm already unconventional, so we're just kind of going with that.
Oh, and can you state your name and address?
Um, so my name is Amanda Brake. I am on several different committees here in Mount Pleasant. I work for the Housing Commission. I work for Maslow's, or rather, I'm board chair for Maslow's Mount Pleasant Tiny Homes Committee, Section Eight Coordinator and Property Manager for Pheasant Run, exactly, or and also Executive Committee Member for the Transitions Committee and the Summit Clubhouse. I am a board member there as well.
Thank you.
Uh, I believe that optimism is the cornerstone for community success, and optimism is fed by gratitude. My work focuses on the constant negativity and seriously daunting statistics, like the ones that you see in front of you. Isabella has only a 4.2% unemployment rate, and yet 23.78% of Isabella residents are currently in poverty. So from nine to five, I listen to stories of trauma and desperation, most especially from D.V. survivors, folks that are homeless or at risk of homelessness, and yet still I maintain optimism because I believe that we continually make positive changes in our community. And I would like to showcase some of the amazing community members and groups that I work with and express my gratitude for the things that they're doing here for our community, or community members. Recently, some of you attended the Bowties and Bourbon's Gala for the Discovery Museum, which was an absolute blast. Discovery Museum does an amazing job inspiring and educating our youth throughout our community. They also do something near and dear to my heart, which is discount admissions for folks that have EBT cards, and I think that is absolutely phenomenal. At this gala, I actually was given the opportunity to be a local celebrity and to represent Max and Emily's, uh, which introduced me to the fact that Max and Emily's is actually servicing our community in a phenomenal way in that the soup kitchen is closed on Sundays. And so at the soup kitchen, when folks come through, if they're needing food on Sunday, they can get a coupon, bring it to Max and Emily's and be served lunch during a Sunday. And that's something that I didn't know about them, and I think that's phenomenal. Last, um, 2022, they serviced about 5,000 different lunches on Sundays, and in 2023, they did over 7,000. That's an awesome community member. Mount Pleasant Housing Commission is partnering with the Care Store. So one of our favorite things, of course, in housing is housing folks that have previously been homeless. Generally, they come to us and they don't have kitchen supplies, they don't have personal care supplies, they don't have cleaning supplies. And so the Care Store has added us as a referral partner, and I think that is a phenomenal work. I'd also like to point out that our local police officers came to Pheasant Run, which is the property that I am property manager for, during that time last summer when we were having some issues with folks stealing from cars locally. Our community was really concerned about the safety and what they should do, and our officers immediately responded to my call, said, we'll get a fellow out there, we'll have that conversation. So we fed them fried chicken and had a phenomenal discussion about what you should do in cases of emergency and and honestly, how open our community and our police officers are to our members that are concerned about different things. And so I am saying gratitude for that as well. At the Housing Commission in 2021, we were issued 15 emergency vouchers. Those vouchers were utilized, which means we were able to find homes for each of those 15 families first in the state of Michigan. And Mount Pleasant Housing Commission is currently at 100% utilization, which is our normal throughout the year. The national average for their housing authorities can fluctuate between 60 and 80%. With that, I'd like to say that I'm really grateful for the local landlords that care for our local residents, and I appreciate the working relationship that I have with them, and I feel like it's a privilege. The Mount Pleasant Housing Commission is gorgeous. In comparison to a lot of projects that are governmentally funded, this is what we're offering our low-income families, and I think this is something to be incredibly proud of. When I have families that poured in from different areas, they've come here for education or they've come here for jobs, and I bring them to one of our townhouses, for example, in Pheasant Run, they're all smiles. They never thought that they could get something like this with a low-income family financial situation. So again, super grateful to this community that this is what we're offering our low-income families. We have so many nonprofit programs that are doing so many awesome things. These are some of my favorites. Uh, I do want to point out the CMU marketing students might be like, why are they up there? Well, that is because these kids devote hours and hours to the tiny homes and to our regional education committee. They've created materials that have allowed us different strategies to reach our lesser-served community members, and I am eternally grateful for them. If there's a need, we're often able to find someone in our community that can fill that need. And if that need isn't being filled, I can promise you that somebody on that board up there is working to find a way to do it. That is an awesome thing in our community. And now to the subject of why I am here today presenting my gratitude. On January 30th, or 31st, rather, from sun down to sun up, we do what's called the pick count. It's the point-in-time count that we issue for our statistical data regarding how many folks we have in our county that are homeless. We go out into the encampments, we go to the different places that we've had reports, we walk down the streets, we see who can we count and how can we help? When we do that, we always bring what's called a stay-safe package. On this day this year, there were 75 packages, and we found out about six days before the pick count that we were significantly short on blankets. I am not going out into the cold with a couple of things in a bag and not being able to give them blankets. That absolutely broke my heart. A few other members on our team said, no, we need to get some blankets out there. So I just posted it on the internet with the tiny homes, and I posted it throughout some tiny town, the tiny town, some of our town talking, you know, Facebook pages. Over 20,355 views were stored on this post. We had a massive overflow of blankets. This is just the overflow. This is not all of the rest of the packages that we were able to fill. So every single package had a blanket. Every single person that we met was able to get one of these packages, and I just think that this is an astounding community doing such amazing things. I showed in the beginning of our present, of this presentation, rather, that we have a lot of folks that are having some hard times right now. But when we call out to our community members, they rise up and they give. And I just think that while we're making these decisions, and you guys do a phenomenal job making sure that you're thinking about who this is going to impact, this is, this is what we're doing here, and I'm really proud to be a member of this community. So I thank you for letting me have this moment to share these things with you.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
Am I on?
You're on.
My name is Peter Koper. I live in Mount Pleasant, 509 South University. I've lived here for a little more than 50 years. As some of you already know, I'm a member of the Citizens Climate Lobby. Comments tonight bear on a topic that I think you're going to have a working session on shortly, and it's climate adaptation. I want to dance on the line between adaptation and mitigation, if you'll bear with me for a few minutes. This was a good night for me personally to come to a commission meeting because I learned more about the projects on Mission and on the downtown area than I had known before, and they looked very good. because I learned more about the projects on Mission and on the downtown area than I had known before, and they look very good. Samples of the kind of thinking that I think folks have been doing already, but what CCL wants to emphasize are thinking about the ways in which those things can help reduce, uh, climate change or adapt to what's coming. I looked at the trees. There are trees on both projects, and my heart leaps up. Lots of research available, lots of serious journalism discussing that kind of thing, green belts and greenery as a mitigation and as an adaptation to what's coming. Something I worry about, for years, I've seen trees pop up downtown, be there for a while, grow a little bit, and then disappear. I don't know how informal I should, are you guys thinking about real trees that can be in place and stay there for decades and produce an actual green belt? Instead of genko trees that are there for 10 years and disappear and are replaced by more genko trees of the same size? That kind of thing. Looking at the parking lot and looking around and reading the things that are available in the journalism on EV, electronic vehicles right now. Things have stalled in spite of some really serious national efforts because folks are worried about range. How many chargers are in this project? And they're popping up around town in various places. There are some in front of Pizza King, I think, now, that kind of thing. We will need, I'm making this up, as many chargers as there are gas pumps in this town. We could be putting in on these parking spaces chargers for practically everyone. In, in Alaska, there are heater outlets for engine heaters in every parking space because if you don't, you can't start your car. Are those the kinds of things that folks are thinking about? And my, uh, my position would urge you to think in these terms as you plan these projects and other ones. Some of the changes we need to make, uh, are going to be, we're going to be forced to make eventually, but we can get ahead of that curve. And, uh, the planning for, I saw tonight, uh, in my case, for the first time, looks good. I particularly appreciate the comparison to Broomfield. Students don't get killed. I don't, I don't remember a student being killed on Broomfield. Students get killed with a startling degree of, uh, regularity in other places. Thank you for your time, folks, and thanks for the work.
Thank you.
Hello. Hi there. I'm Marie Koper. I live at 509 South University. And you usually, uh, see me here speaking on behalf of Mount Pleasant Citizens Climate Lobby and Citizens Climate Education. But tonight, in addition to the more than 700 citizens that are, uh, that have signed on in support of CCL-CE, I'd like to represent another group, the growing number of, um, businesses and community members that are part of the Mid-Michigan Business and Community Sustainability Partnership. Uh, we just wanted to include everybody, but it really makes a mouthful of a name. But, um, that group already includes members of the city, elected boards and staff members, as well as the township and county governmental entities, uh, CMU administration faculty and students, uh, Mid-Michigan College, MMDC, uh, Chamber of Commerce, among others. So we're, and we're trying, we're, have an ongoing recruitment process to get more stakeholders. Both groups, I would say tonight, want to express our deep, deep, deep appreciation to the City Commission for, uh, the city goal of developing a climate change action plan and offer our support for its adoption. Mount Pleasant will be joining the dozens of other entities in Michigan already who are committed to mitigating and adapting to climate change. And we urge you to, um, look at that, that we don't have to reinvent the wheel in order to, and we can save time and, uh, money and, uh, precious resources by examining those and, you know, making some, making the local adjustments that we need. But I, I specifically want to urge you all to include significant mitigation efforts in the planning. Because without doing that, we are, um, adding and continuing to add the, the, um, to the causes that are making the problems for us. So if you make a bathtub analogy that's got a spout that's flowing with, with, um, too much water, too much CO2, too much green, too many greenhouse gases, and filling the bathtub to overflowing, to just figure out how to get more mops and more drainage is, is pointless and, you know, short-sighted. So let's include significant measures for doing our part in turning down the influx of, of, that's contributing to the causes, our, our contribution to the causes. So to that end, I would like to, uh, pass out, some of you have seen this already, but these are the, um, the mission statement and goals of the Sustainability Partnership. And, um, I particularly call your attention to one of the first ones, foster local collaborations that reduce cost and increase economies of scale. So if we use our, collaborate with the other entities, it doesn't all fall on the city to, to, we can expand, if you will, then the scope of our planning, your plan, your planning on behalf of the community. And for that, uh, we're immensely grateful. I can't say that enough. I would also like to just share the, um, flyer for the home show this weekend because, uh, John Freeman is going to be speaking there on Saturday at 11 o'clock. He is the Executive Director of the Great Lakes Renewable Energy Association. Uh, he has been working on various types of clean energy for the last 10, 12 years. He knows the, what's going on in Lansing. He knows what's going on across the state in terms of, uh, community solar in other communities and rooftop solar, distributed energy. So this would be the time to go for his Q and A after, after his speech, uh, on, um, Saturday, this Saturday's. So it's only $5 at the door, or I saw a sign at Rick's, it's $4 there. So please get, consider getting your ticket and, uh, and talking with John Freeman. And thank you very much again for undertaking this significant, very significant, uh, step for our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to come forward and speak? I'm going to ask the commission if they'd like to take a recess or if we would like to just go into session.
Two, three minutes. Recess.
I'll give you five. We'll take a five-minute recess.
All right, good evening, the City Commission. Thank you very much for having me. Uh, this is going to be a very short presentation. Uh, what I'm looking for is for most of you to do the talking, to be very honest with you. I'm just going to talk about the value of a climate change preparedness plan, components of a climate change preparedness plan. And then I really just want to get some feedback from the City Commission as we start to move forward with designing this plan and creating it. My idea is to deliver it to the City Commission if I can before year's end. What are the components in there that we want to see? Are there particular populations we want to make sure that we get, um, some public information on, any of those kind of things? So this is not my, uh, presentation, never mind, hold on. I thought that, that cover looked funny. I thought, I'm like, I didn't design a cover like that.
That's not what we have.
It was right next to it, so. All right, let me start over again. I'll repeat everything I just said. Climate change preparedness plan. So the value of a climate change preparedness plan, risk assessment and vulnerability analysis, essentially knowing what your community is at risk for. Developing, development of adaptation strategies, the kind of things that we're going to do to overcome any kind of disruption that climate change could cause in the area, how we save human lives, those kind of things. Understanding infrastructure needs and resilience speaks for itself. Community engagement and education, understanding what the community knows about climate change, what it doesn't know, and where we might be able to fill those, fill those gaps in understanding. And then economic resilience as well, too, ensuring that our community is one that can continue to persevere through climate change and continue to drive value. Contents of a plan typically starts with an executive summary. It talks about key findings in there as well, too. Climate change assessment really just says, all right, what are those kind of things in climate that, uh, will result from climate change that may have an impact here in the city of Mount Pleasant? Is that, uh, extreme heat, extreme cold, those kind of things? So we look at what components of climate change could affect us, and then we throw over that a risk analysis. How likely is this to happen? How likely is extreme heat to happen compared to, let's say, impact from hurricanes, those kind of things? Uh, from there, we talk about the goals and objectives in the plan. Now that we know what the issues are and what we need to look out for, what are those things that we want to address in this climate change preparedness plan to meet those concerns? We talk about the strategies of how we're going to meet those goals and objectives. And then there's a section on implementation and monitoring as well as to how this plan continues to be a living document. So plan for development, we'll start with data analysis, looking at relevant data that should be in the plan, and it'll also have community engagement as well, too. We'll do the risk analysis. We'll develop our goals and objectives. We'll create our strategies to implement, and then we'll develop the monitoring metrics and expectations. That is a very high level of everything that essentially goes into the plan. Now what I want to do is turn it over to the City Commission to say, all right, what are those things that you want to see in the plan? Or what are the things that the City Commission might call out specifically that we want to pay attention to? Other specific populations we want to make sure we get input from, those kind of things? So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the City Commission, and I will be over here and I will take some notes.
That's your cue.
Yeah, I'll jump in on it. I know, um, we had, like, talking with Aaron, um, there is, and like, as some, as some members of the public had pointed out, there's no need to reinvent the wheel on a lot of this. But there is, so there is, um, I believe, Migraine Communities, I believe is the name of it, offers, um, a template plan, um, that, or like, just a structure and everything for us to work off of, like, giving, like, just an idea of, like, what kind of metrics that we can look for and how, like, again, like, that plan can be structured. So I'm, I definitely think, like, utilizing those structures is good. As far as, especially like, early on, I would like to see, um, as we're, like, looking to implement this, I would like to see levels of public engagement, perhaps like, uh, like, just like, uh, public meetings, um, if, like, if there's, if there's any possibility to, like, engage different stakeholder groups. Um, I know, like, the Citizens Climate Committee or Climate Lobby, um, has talked about, just like, the different partnerships here. If we could bring them together, I think if we had, could have a couple of key events where we could really engage people in bringing in their thoughts. There are a number of student organizations that we could, uh, reach out to. Central Sustainability is pretty prolific, and they're really excited to be engaged with this. I've talked with them a couple of times. That's kind of, uh, public engagement would be my first thing, especially like, early, early years of the plan. And then going off of that, my thought would be, um, as far as making sure that this can get updated, implemented throughout the years, it would be kind of, my thought is if we created a committee, like, if, like, a subcommittee, like, a, uh, just another committee and everything. And that, and that's a lot there and everything, just, yeah, we'll sign a committee to it. But if we're looking to engage Central, if we're looking to engage- if we're looking to engage the tribe, if we're looking to engage community groups, that might be something worth looking into. I'd want to hear other thoughts from my fellow commissioners on that.
Commissioner Eke.
I do agree. First of all, thank you for bringing this forward. Yes, it's, it's important. We need to, we need to engage. We need to be involved. I, I, I agree, you know, a subcommittee is one way of doing this because this is important work. And, you know, so hopefully, if you have a subcommittee also, that, that, and we build in some accountability because the subcommittee ultimately will have to report on whatever it is, you know, they're finding and where they're going with this. Public engagement, because you want to find out, you know, a whole series of hearings or conversations, you want to find out what the issues are for people. I, I mean, you know, doing a risk assessment without really talking to people doesn't, it's not going to help you. But I do think that it is important to do the risk assessment, to figure out where the gaps are, what are we, you know, what are we vulnerable to? So that public engagement would hopefully give us some information. I think that eventually somehow we need to address the question of, you know, sustainability. It's wonderful to put out a plan and to say we're going to do all these things, but then, you know, we don't create some plan for sustaining this because it's not a one-time, you know, act. It has to be something that we think for the, think about for the rest of our lives, right? Going forward. Because climate change is not going to, it's going to be with us. We have to address it. How do we deal? How do we mitigate it? How do we think about, you know, adapting? If things happen, a few years ago, there was a flood, right? So what have people done? So sustainability becomes important for, you know, and I do think that it is important also to think about who is affected. I mean, everybody's affected, but, you know, you know, vulnerable populations, so who is, you do mention vulnerability here. So, and I'm not sure how you're looking at vulnerability, whether it's in terms of infrastructure or population, and the various ways in which we are vulnerable. So, you know, and education becomes important. So that part of that engagement also has to be accompanied with some level of education. That, that, we're dealing with a lot of misconceptions about, you know, climate change right now. And people can Google and find out, you know, what's not true. There's so much, right? Therefore, it is our responsibility to engage in rigorous or vigorous education about what this entails and how it affects us and, you know, and how we're going to, you know, address that. So eventually, you know, what we will, what the goals are, what do you really want to achieve, right? So, and, and I, I, I think I will start with the public engagement, seriously, because it will help us collect data. And then, you know, risk assessment. I want to do some, you know, a, a lot of education that's important, both before, during, and afterwards, because that would also help us with sustainability. We need to build in sustainability in here. And that becomes important in all sorts of ways, not just simply economically, but, you know, sort of, just like, the lifeline of the community, really. It will affect a whole lot of things. And of course, the groups, you know, I, I did mention who is affected, but the groups that, you know, who, who might be partners, you know, as we begin to talk about this, you know, in other words, stakeholders, right? You know, and who could we get to be involved with us? I don't think that it is something that the City Commission should undertake alone, but the City Commission can provide some kind of, you know, map, and then, you know, get other people, you know, who might be interested in working with us.
Commissioner Bush.
Boomer, I believe you and I are both on the Wellhead Protection
Yes.
Committee. I'm not sure if anybody else was in the meeting, but I think that there's a lot of individuals in that group that would be a good partner for this. You know, we were already having a lot of the same sort of conversations that I can see us having when we talk about working together with other, other entities. So maybe kind of reaching out to that group because, I mean, that's, I mean, we, the Wellhead Protection Program is linked to, you know, climate preparedness, so.
I think that travel is important. I don't see, I don't see how we, we do this without, you know.
If we had some kind of larger committee, if that was something that we built to, definitely.
Yeah, definitely. CMU, the tribe.
The Health Department.
Yeah, the Health, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
One thing, one of the bigger, I, I think, definitely building towards larger capital projects, I mean, is definitely something, it's not going to start happening next year where it's like, you know, 2025, we're going to solarize the whole, like, city department, city departments and everything. We're going to work to that. And like, as far as deferring energy costs, I think something that could be done sooner and that would probably be a larger cost to a plan is I would like to see us eventually have some kind of fixed staff on, like, dedicated to this. Now, what that looks like, if, like, I can't imagine, I think, like, cities like Ann Arbor or something have an entire department. We're not that size. We don't have that kind of funding. But I think there are ways we can look at picking up, like, again, staff who are dedicated to this topic, who could potentially swing between different departments. Internships always are an easy, like, generally seen as an easy enough fix. I know Matthew Leish, he's both a professor at Central, and he is also on our planning commission. He's been working on some grant work to get AmeriCorps funding for, like, mid-Michigan rural grants to have AmeriCorps staff members dedicated to climate issues in municipalities. And I know a big hurdle I was thinking of, when he first described it to me, it was like, okay, so if Mount Pleasant hires an AmeriCorps staffer, are they, like, handling everything for Isabella County in this mid-Michigan? No, they would be focused on whatever we assign them regarding that topic for Mount Pleasant. So again, like, it's picking up, I think there are some cost-effective ways we could start picking up some staff members there. But again, that would probably be the large, most significant cost on anything, I think, creating that dedicated staff position. So that's definitely something that would need to be worked into a budget and would need probably additional support from the Commission.
In, in addition to having, you know, assigning a staff or a designated staff position for this, I do think that we could also explore the possibility of paid internship, you know, you know, with CMU, the honors program, and, you know, there are a number of, you know, units, you know. My department, for instance, would love, I mean, my college, you know, students, they would be excited about this. And I'm not just, yeah, I'm selfish on that part, but paid internship, and so figure out how much it is, you know, because on the one hand, it, there, there is a sense in which we acknowledge the, the, you know, what the students would contribute. But they also, we also begin to mentor them, and it provides them experience and opportunity to start thinking, you know, along, you know, you know, this line. Because hopefully, they will be the ones who would carry this word, work forward. It's also one way of sustaining, you know, what we're doing. So there, there are a number of options that we can look at, you know, so. And then you start looking for grants. There are grants that are available to even initiate, to start maybe initial work on this. You know, what, what is available out there at state level, federal level, or, you know, local level to begin some initial work on this.
Okay.
Another policy, a possible policy, like tangible, I know other cities have started implementing plans to reduce gas hookups for buildings as far as the, like, use of natural gas and propane. Thoughts from anyone else on the Commission? Any, like, thoughts on this?
Clarify, expand.
As far as heating goes.
You mean, you know, a building?
Yeah, heating and cooking and everything. People, that, it's something that other communities have done, have started working on phasing out as far as, like, in new construction, limiting, again, gas hookups for the, for new, new construction, new building. Again, that would be, I think.
Well, if you're asking how I feel, I think it's a bad idea.
Well, and that's, and that's talking about it. And again, like, I don't think, and Brian, I, I, just challenging on this, I don't think 2025, we're not going, we're not going to just drop the hammer and say, nope, we're done. But again, looking over the next 10, 20, even 30 years, like, if we can move away from that.
Well, but then, you know, I, I, I think there's nothing wrong with encouraging, you know, people to, to consider that and leaving it to individuals. I don't know that, I'm not so sure that at this. I would do it.
Yeah, no.
Okay, I would do that, but I'm not so sure that everybody would because then you would have resistance. But I would suggest that we actually start with us making those tiny changes, you know, that address, you know, you know, climate change and making ourselves, you know, making the city, whatever we're doing, City Commission, City Hall responsive to these issues as a way of modeling what we're talking about. I mean, you know, I, I am of the opinion that if you're going to tell somebody to walk 10 miles, you better do it first, you know, so that you know what it feels like, or at least show what, you know, that you're doing it, that you're committed to it. It's a question of commitment. So why don't we start with those small things that we can do as a city, especially what we, the city, you know, the city itself manages, and begin to implement some of those? And then publicizing, you know, the implementation of these, you know, small acts which hopefully collectively would make a, you know, be transformative, basically. So we start there and.
Build up from that.
Build up from that. That's where I would start.
Commissioner Bush.
I would like to agree with what Commissioner Eke said. I, I def, I think that the, what I saw as a climate change preparedness plan would kind of almost be three-part. And like, first part would be what the city can do to model and, and, and basically, when we make decisions as a city, we think about these elements, like, we think about what the corporates were saying and about, we, we think about these things when we make decisions for the city. So that would be kind of part one. Part two would be having a city and connected municipalities emergency, like, you know, strategies in place. So that would be part two. And then part three could be things like what Boomer's suggesting in terms of, like, things we're asking of the community and asking of business owners to do outside of what the city is responsible for making decisions based on. And so when we get to that stage, I think that a lot of people are going to say, well, if you want me to switch to gas, will you, or switch from gas, will you tell me why? And I think there's going to be people who are going to want to see, like, well, this is why. Now, the whole concept of a carbon footprint is kind of, you know, not legitimate, but, you know, the, the thought behind it still is, to a certain extent, in terms of, like, what this action costs in terms of, you know, energy and what, you know, what this action prevents in terms of energy loss. So I could see something like Sherrett's style where, you know, people are asked to, you know, to, to, to see the different steps that could possibly, you know, be taken and whether or not that we, you know, we want to consider those as adoption and that be part of the education.
What do you mean by your carbon footprint is not legitimate? It is, that, that argument is legitimate.
Well, it's a, it's kind of a, it's, it's kind of a concept that's supposed to make individuals feel bad about what they do as a person.
I'm not sure that it's supposed to make them feel bad.
Well, based, compared to the, basically making it sound like the, 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 the impact that a human being, that an individual has is part of the problem when really it just needs to be large corporate changes on a large corporate scale. Am I saying, can you say that better?
Individual responsibility, but you have an, you, as an individual, you have a responsibility.
You do have a responsibility, but the whole concept, I just disagree about the phrase carbon footprint.
I think we're going to have to disagree on that because I don't think that it's meant to, it's meant for anybody. It's not meant to make you feel bad, but to examine, you know, part of what you're trying to do really in terms of, you know, the, the assessment and, you know, the study is to look at, would be to look at, you know, a carbon footprint and hopefully help people to look at their own carbon footprint.
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing that, that there isn't validity. It's just, it's the, the issue is more that the propaganda around.
It's not a propaganda either.
I think we're getting into the semantics of the discussion, yeah.
Let's not, let's not discuss it. We may be going into the weeds.
Yeah, okay, okay. We're not going to agree on this.
Erin, do you have what you need? Is there any other questions or any other things that you need from us?
Did you have a question, Erin?
I just had a comment. This is probably something that I said to you soon after you were hired, that a constituent came to me and said, why can't we put solar panels on City Hall? And then, you know, I find out, well, we don't own the whole building. Well, we could maybe do it on the part we own. And the other part was, you mentioned infrastructure in your introduction to this, and I think that's still a part of it that has to be considered.
Absolutely, yes. Just as far as solarize, I believe solarize, I can't remember the name of the program, but we have been to a couple of events where essentially it's the group buying of solar panels at a discounted rate. If the city could, could potentially look to in the future sponsoring something like that where we organize with just city residents, if they're interested in purchasing, we can connect them to create a larger pool and see a larger discount potentially in that. I think that's some, also something we could do in the near term.
Okay.
Isn't, I think they say grants too, right?
There's always grants.
Yeah, there are grants for all this, yes. Again, it is education. I mean, I'm listening to all of this. People are not that educated, you know, yes, we assume that everybody is. That's an error. I can't assume that everybody is educated unless. I think part of the responsibility, you know, our responsibility, if we want to do this very well, is, you know, to educate, you know, the community, provide the information, figure out how to do that, connect with groups that already do that work. There is much to be done, you know. It's partly education and, you know, people becoming really, really aware of the implications of climate change for them. I mean, hey, there's a winter that, where we only have one huge snow dump, and that's it. Winter is almost over. What's going to happen in the summer? I don't want to tell you. But so, you know, and how would that affect our food and everything else? And, you know, who knows? I don't know. But, you know, well, I'm being facetious about that right now. But they're really, for me, seriously, we, you know, there has to be a lot of education on this. You know, and I don't think that it is a task that we, we should just take on without really considering how, you know, the resources. Out of what's going to drive this is what resources we have available, you know, and then what goals we really want to achieve. And I hope that, you know, we make the whole, the goals, you know, reasonable and achievable. I don't want to be frustrated and sustainable.
Absolutely. So just to summarize what I'm hearing from the City Commission, MI Green Communities was mentioned as a great resource, and it's definitely one I look to utilize in this development of the plan. Public engagement, this will be public meetings with a number of different groups which the City Commission had mentioned this evening. I also liked the piece on utilizing that public engagement to gauge risk assessment. We can hear directly from the people what kind of vulnerabilities exist out there. Education being a big piece here, and I think a good foundation of that has been laid in the work that Central Michigan University has done with us. And in particular, too, the intern that we had hosted last year, Mason, did a fantastic job in putting some of that information out there.
And the COPAs, and the COPAs who are here, they do that work already.
Absolutely. Method for implementation and tracking. We discussed the desire to create a subcommittee on this. They would report annually, and, and we can work out some of the, some of the mechanics as to how that reporting would go. Goals and objectives around this could include anything from. Goals and objectives around this could include anything from staffing, identifying grants, policies, and programs here as well, too. So that's just to encapsulate kind of what I've heard here. So from there, I will work with staff on this, develop a strategy for going forward and come back to the city commission for what we need to.
You need to identify key partners.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move.
I second.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes, yes. Run.
We are adjourned at nine.
Got in a motion.
Good.